Test. Test.
Mr. Frank, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
And we have you too, sir. Thank you, sir.
That's the national law. Is she the? Make some room. Make some room. All right. You know me all spread out everywhere. Ready, ready on the right. Ready on the five times. I will call to order our city regularly scheduled city council meeting of March 17th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Records reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Mr. Allgood, who is attending via Zoom. So appreciate him doing that as his business schedule didn't allow him to be here in person. I'll be sure to remember to come back to you. These comments, I always tend to forget the Zoom people. Appreciate that. Also welcome our department heads along with our city administrator, Mr. Duncan, our assistant city administrator, Mr. Saxton, and our city clerk, Ms. Cindy Miller, who keeps us straight as she can. And along with our citizens, appreciate you being here along with some special guests that we will get to as we go down the agenda. So anyone attending via Zoom, we appreciate you taking the time to also participate in the City of Malden's business meeting. Next order of business will be our invocation, our pleasure allegiance, Councilman Crayling.
Since it is St. Patrick's Day, I decided to honor the day with a prayer from St. Patrick. And it's also my grandfather, Claire Bean's birthday. So I want to throw a shout out for him as well. If you would bow your heads. As I rise today, may the strength of God pilot me, the power of God uphold me, the wisdom of God guide me, may the eye of God look before me, the ear of God hear me, the word of God speak for me, may the hand of God protect me, the way of God lie for me, the shield of God defend me, the host of God save me, may Christ shield me today, Christ with me, Christ before me, Christ behind me, Christ in me, Christ beneath me, Christ above me, Christ on my right, Christ on my left, Christ when I lie down, Christ when I sit, Christ when I stand, Christ when, Christ in the heart of everyone who thinks of me, Christ in the mouth of everyone who speaks of me, Christ in the eyes of those that see me, and Christ in the eyes that hear me, St. Patrick. Those rest for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Crayling. And I just noticed to my right, I failed to introduce him. We have our city attorney, Mr. Hughes, available to keep us legally straight this evening. So thank you, Daniel, for being here. I am going to come down front for just a moment. Yes, got it. One of the privileges I have and honor I have is to issue various proclamations. And this one's especially dear to us and some of us who are younger, who graduated from one of our schools in our community. And we're always pleased to, as always, go Mavs, right? So we're pleased to have one of our outstanding educators with us this evening. And if, Ms. Shannon, if you want to come up. You get to face the class now. Not an English major, are you? Good, because I'm not either. Let me read this. Whereas the Golden Apple Award is a weekly award program through WYFF to recognize outstanding teachers who go above and beyond their normal teaching duties with nominees coming from schools and career centers throughout the area. Whereas through the nomination of Malden High School student Matthew Booth, Ms. Shannon Hansen, a teacher at Malden High School, received the Golden Apple Award for the week of February 10th, 2025. And whereas Ms. Hansen is currently the department head for the Career Technology Education Department, an assistant athletic director, a member of the School Improvement Council, and the advisor for DECA, which prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Anything else you do? Wow! Whereas Ms. Hansen teaches entrepreneurship and sports marketing and management, drawing on her 20-year career in sports and entertainment marketing and sharing her love of athletics and business with her students. Whereas Ms. Hansen grew up in Michigan and graduated from the University of Michigan with a degree in public relations and corporate communications. Whereas she and her husband have three children and a love of attending Mavs games and events. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, along with all the residents of our city and my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim that we are proud of Ms. Hansen's dedication to the students at Malden High School and congratulate her on receiving the Golden Apple Award. The city is proud to honor her. Date is the 17th day of March, 2025.
No, I love being there. I love teaching. I love all of my students. And thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mattney, for being your PR person.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is a proclamation for National Day of Prayer. Whereas America needs a moral rebirth and nearly ever problem facing our nation today springs from a moral base. And whereas we need to implore God's blessings on our country, and whereas we need to ask God to forgive our sinfulness and restore our moral perspective, and whereas we ask that our citizens be reminded of 2 Chronicles 714, "If my people who are called on by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sins and will heal their land." Now therefore I Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, do hereby proclaim Thursday, March, May 1st, 2025, as National Day of Prayer in the City of Malden and urge our citizens to join the millions of other Americans across the nation in praying for a moral rebirth in America. Now we'll hear from the Small Business Administration, Ms. Green. Just check to make sure the green light's on for the mic. I forgot to check it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and the city council. Thank you for letting me come and present the programs that we have available for your community. We have reopened the deadline to apply for disaster assistance. When Hurricane Helena happened, it was a lot going on at the time. And we feel that people may not have had the chance to apply for assistance. So we reopened the deadline to April 27, 2025 for physical damages. And homeowners, renters are eligible to apply for that. And then we also have, we have physical damage for businesses as well. But we have another program for business. It's called economic injury. And with that program, business doesn't necessarily have to have any physical damages. The damages comes from loss of revenue. A business may say, well, I didn't suffer. We didn't have any physical damages. Sometimes it takes six months to maybe over a year before a business know that they have been impacted by this injury. So we encourage business to look back at their revenue at this time last year and compare it to now, this year, and see if it's a decrease in their revenue. Again, we do offer assistance for homeowners, renters, and businesses with physical damages. And then we have the economic injury for businesses and nonprofit organizations. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for any questions that you may have for me.
Counsel?
Okay, we asked that you, I sent a digital copy of this, and we asked that you share it on your platforms so we can get the word out to the community so they can get the necessary help that they need to recover through this recovery period. Thank you again for letting me come and present the resources that we have for your community.
Mr. Green. Next before us is our dear friends with the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, Mr. Jose Reynoso.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Reynosa. I'm with the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. And I'm here today to present the, your fiscal year 2025 annual action plan for the City of Malden. And so brief agenda, I'll kind of introduce myself. And I do have one board member here today. Ms. Denise is here today. I'll kind of go over what the annual action plan is, the kind of funding that the City of Malden receives, what your proposed allocation is for this year, as well as some of the projects that GCRAs. So what is the annual action plan? So it is the application that we submit to HUD every year on your behalf. And it kind of outlines what we plan to do with your Committee Development Block Grant, your home grant, and then your emergency solutions grants. And so we do this every year. And so the program year actually starts July 1st, and it ends June 30th of the next year. And so this year is actually the first year of our five-year consolidated plan that we're currently working on as well. And so what are some of the guidelines for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG? And so at least 70% of those funds have to be used for activities that help improve low to moderate income individuals. And those activities must meet one of the three guidelines that's shown on the PowerPoint at the bottom. Used for prevention or elimination of slight and blind, addressing urgent need in the community, and of course, benefit low to moderate income individuals or families. So the other funding source that you guys receive on my behalf is the Home Investment Partnership. And so we use these funds to strictly build affordable housing units, whether that be rental or homeownership. And you've probably heard of some of the developments that we've had before, the Parkside and Butler, Parkside and Butler 2, Ole He Place. And I think they're finished, there might be started the Beavodir project as well. So we've got to work with a bunch of developers to bring affordable housing to Malden. And so here you see the prior two years of CDBG and home funds, as well as the draft for this upcoming program year. And so we've kind of got those split up. And so these are some of the activities that your funding go towards new construction, rehab, economic development, whether it be that form of facades or a low interest loan, demolition. And then you guys have, of course, two sub recipients that we fund. That would be your tenant for community services, and then your parks and rec. So here are some of the housing programs that we do have. It's our homeownership, whether that be rental units, first time home buyers program through a partnership with Community Works Carolina, that is for down payment assistance or assistance with closing costs. Our investor program, so if you have any landlords in Malden that have any units that need to be brought up to code, they can come through, get a small interest business loan. Our rehab for major repairs and minor repairs, our in-house financing for homeownership, and then our rental assistance, which is not just the rent, but also utilities through our homelessness prevention for those that we want them, were in danger of getting evicted. And then our rapid rehousing for those that are already living on the streets to get them rehoused. Some of our economic and community development activities include infrastructure improvement, demolition, of course, of dilapidated units, facility improvements if for senior centers. And then, of course, the funding of nonprofit organizations. And then our economics are, of course, the small time business loans, our facade improvements. And in the coming weeks, we'll also have a, for those who have suffered any kind of storm damage through Helene or in the next, hopefully no more disasters come our way. But in case there are, we will have those for home repair as well, for many storm damage, be able to assist. And then here is a kind of brief timeline of how the annual action plan will go. We'll kind of do these meetings in March, early April. Once, we'll be receiving comments all the way up until May 2nd. But before then, of course, we'll have these meetings, submit any comments that we get beforehand to the Greenville County Council there. From there, we'll get their approval before we finally submit to HUD on May 15th, hopefully. And if there's any comments, I'm here. If you have any questions. If not, you can also reach out to our executive director, Joe Smith. Again, we'll be still accepting any comments until May 6th before we submit to HUD.
Thank you, sir. This is considered GCRAs public hearings. If you have any comments or questions, please feel free to speak up. I'll direct it to the council first. And then if there's anyone in the audience that has any questions, feel free. We've had a longstanding partnership with this, and we've completed five or six workforce housing projects currently in the City of Malden. I think we have the, I think we're finishing up the third one at Parkside.
Yes.
And then there's one right on past Lawrence Electra that's under.
Beavodir.
The Beavodir. Good. So really appreciate that partnership and segment of our population.
We're always here to help.
No questions? Frank, good?
Mayor, I have one quick question. So when it talks about the activities that must meet one of three national objectives, talking about the benefit of low and moderate income persons, prevention or elimination of slums or bright, or urgent community development needs, I'm curious just out of what you have, and you may not know the answer, but I figured I'd ask. What kind of percentage breakdowns do you normally see or saw in 2024 when it comes to those three different criteria? Like which ones are the ones that are typically met versus the ones that are less common?
So in the recent years, most of the allocation has gone towards actually building the, any kind of affordable housing. I would say at least 70% of it, maybe 80% of it went towards that, of course, because we've had partnership with developers like the Beavodir and Parkside. That's where most of the funding has gone, of course. If you don't spend any of it, like if we have demolition, but you didn't have any demolition that year, that you retain that funding so you can use it next year. So in case you have anything major come up, that a parcel that needs to be kind of demolished. So we always have that. But yes, it's mostly been 70 to 80% of it has gone towards your partnership with developers to build affordable housing.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Audience, anyone got a question? See you. None. Thank you, Jose. We appreciate you being here and for your program. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for our various meetings last month. Council, just for sake of moving along here, you've had in your packets since Thursday or Friday, our city council meetings of February 17th, 2025, our special call council of March 3rd, 2025, and our special call council minutes of March 6th, 2025. I would ask for unanimous consent on these unless there's any clarification points that need to be made. Ms. Miller is all opposed to write down. Seeing none, if there's no objection, we will accept the minutes as submitted by unanimous consent. There is no objection. There, accept. Now we are to our first public comment, which is designed to be on a topic of the agenda. I do not see that we have anyone signed up for an agenda item, public comment. Move right along there. Now we will hear from the few things we might have going on in our city from our city administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate everyone this evening. So first off, I wanted to mention that the City of Malden, Hughes Investments, and Greenville Pro Soccer broke ground on the new stadium at Brideway Station last week. The event featured a special appearance by soccer legend and Greenville Triumph co-owner Ronaldinho Gaúcho, widely regarded as one of the greatest players of all time. Fans turned out in droves to see the soccer superstar and celebrate the historic moment. Approximately 1,000 people attended the event in total, including local dignitaries, business and community leaders, residents, and soccer enthusiasts. Stadium is slated to open in 2026 and will serve as a permanent home for the Greenville Triumph and Greenville Liberty Soccer Clubs. Greenville Pro Soccer will be the city's tenant operator of the stadium and will feature a variety of programming, including hosting other professional youth sports matches, concerts, festivals, and community events. Though the stadium's initial design and capacity is still being finalized, the stadium's operator continues to work on an operations plan for parking. The plan being organized will vary in scope and complexity based upon the events planned. Greenville Pro Soccer is working with the City of Malden, local schools and businesses, Brideway Station, and other partners on a comprehensive parking strategy for game days and special events. The final operations plan will include strategies for parking, pedestrian safety and mobility, traffic flow, rideshare operations, and shuttling services. Once these plans are finalized, they will be shared with the public. Many thanks to everyone who joined us this past Wednesday to celebrate a historic moment for the City of Malden, Brideway Station, Greenville Pro Soccer, and the entire upstate region. And one other announcement before we actually have a presentation tonight from KCI, I wanted to announce that if you are in the Tanner Road and Verden Road area, you may see going up District South, which will be located right there off of Woodruff. Development includes 450 residential units, which is a mix of apartments, townhomes, and carriage homes, 16,000 square feet of workspace, pool and clubhouse, and much more. District South is going to be a great addition to the east side of Malden and is expected to be completed in March 2027. For more information, you can go to flannoycompanies.com. That's my primary report. And we have a representative, Ms. Bethany Bird from KCI, to deliver the Stormwater Master Plan that we've been working on for a while.
Good evening, Council. I am Bethany Bird with KCI, presenting on behalf of Elise Harris and Matt Kelly. Apparently, I'm the only one in the office with a halfway decent immune system. So y'all get me tonight. If y'all do have any questions, I am going to defer to Elise. Her contact information is at the end of the presentation. Oh, let me try it one more time. There we go. Okay. So today for the project overview of the Stormwater Master Plan, we're going to be going over the FEMA Emergency Management Agency grant for the City Council, for the City of Malden and the City of Fountain Inn. The objective was to address the increased flooding issues due to urban development. And our scope included survey of stormwater assets, which includes bridges, culverts, and drainage systems. We developed a citywide GIS database and created hydraulic and hydrogeologic models for analysis. So when considering the models, hydrology focuses on the water cycle, including rainfall runoff, infiltration, and rainfall runoff and infiltration, while hydraulics deals with the movement of water within a system like pipes, channels, and other assets that manage these flows. The models show where the issues are in the area when large water events occur. Examples of crossings that we're going to be looking at will be shown throughout the presentation. This is not technically a crossing that you see on this slide. A stormwater crossing does refer to a structure like a culvert or a bridge that allows stormwater to pass under a road or over a road, an embankment, or other obstruction, which prevents the flooding and ensures proper drainage. A watershed report was created for Malden and Fountain Inn, and we held public meetings last year to gather data. Long-term planning for the city was considered when presenting the most beneficial way to spend funds, which I'll go over towards the end of the presentation. So this figure shows the four watersheds within the City of Malden. A watershed is an area of land that drains all of its water to a specific lake, river, or creek. The primary system crossings are shown here with the red dots that you probably cannot see. But the four watersheds that we're looking at are Bridgeport Creek, Gilder Creek, Laurel Creek, and the Reddy River. So for our findings and flood risk analysis, we evaluated level of service of the existing infrastructures. We determined areas at risk under current and future conditions and identified priority improvement projects for the capital improvements plan. The level of service and stormwater stormwater refers to how well a system can handle rainfall and prevent flooding. It defines the system's capacity to manage different amounts of stormwater based on factors like rainfall intensity, frequency and local conditions. We looked at future conditions and future conditions of properties that have the potential to be developed. We identified priority improvement projects for your capital improvements plan. For the prioritization, prioritization and cost analysis, we ranked the projects based on cost effectiveness and impacts. The weighted scoring methods account for the existing condition, the proximity to critical facilities, property and roadway flooding, constraints on implementation and roadway type. The estimated costs range from 139,000 to 4.6 million, and this is a pretty good example of what the crossings look like that we surveyed. So an example of one of the sites we looked at on this project was Kingsley Drive, where we have an existing 30-inch reinforced concrete pipe that's in fairly good condition, but the crossing is undersized based on the level of service analysis. Our recommendation would be to replace the crossing with an eight-by-eight reinforced con- concrete box and raise the road itself up by three feet. The cost of a project like this is looking at just over a million dollars, and the crossing was undersized based on our level of service evaluations. And these evalu- evaluations were done for every crossing within the system in the city limits. So this map shows future land development based on zoning and land that has the potential to be developed out in the future, which will lead to increased flooding because we're increasing the impervious surfaces. This map shows the anticipated 25 and 100-year effects on all parcels within the area of the Kingsley Drive crossing. And this is more of a big-picture study, so some of these parcels might experience effects in a small area while others could see more severe flooding effects. The purpose of this study was to identify properties and locations that would need upgrades to the system to minimize flooding. This figure is a more detailed view that shows the proposed alternatives recommendation, recommended improvements in the Kingsley Drive area, which includes replacing two of the box culvert, two box culverts and raising the road in two areas. So this is a list of the priority projects within the city's pro- properties. Um, they were ranked again based on the estimated costs, and then they were given a raw score based on the criteria that I went over previously. The highest priority projects were identified as Elm Drive, Owens Lane and Fargo Street, and it's a little hard to see, but the weighted score on the far right, you can see it's not necessarily ranked in order of highest to lowest. Um, if you go to our report, um, we have little footnotes. Uh, so the proposed improvements at Mimosa Drive, which is item number eight, result in an increased flow in the downstream. So we ranked these crossings as an adjusted scale because they are downstream of Mimosa Drive and they need to be, um, completed first. So I believe that's number four through seven. For the city crossing improvements, this is a map that shows you exactly where each of the priority areas are. It is important to remember that this was a qualitative, quantitative type ranking where we looked at the five different individual assets or criteria in order to determine the overall weighted score. And this is also the project areas identified. So for the county and state crossing improvements, we identified three areas for the county being Loblaw Lee Circle and two on Adams Mill Road, whereas the state primary crossings are one, two and three were Evening Way, Bon Air Street and Standing Springs Road. And again, these are just the map showing the areas. This map on the bottom left shows Loblaw Lee Circle. And then this one shows the Adams Mill Road improvements. And this one, I believe, shows all of the state improvement areas. And the other state improvement areas. So for our plan of action, we're going to implement the highest priority improvements first. We're going to leverage data for future flood management risk, secure funding for local, long-term in- infrastructure resilience. We're going to prioritize projects, and by doing this, the city can make sure they are spending available funds in a way that helps the community see the most benefit. Funding opportunities will be explored through FEMA, HMA, Hazard Mitigation Assistance, or BRIC, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Community Grants. EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, or National Fish and Wildlife could have the potential for a very specific grant opportunity dependent on qualifications for that funding cycle. Thank you. That's the end. It won't let me go to the next one. Perfect. And here's Elise's contact information. If you'll have any basic questions, I can answer them, but if not, feel free to reach out to Elise.
Done. That's it.
All right, got it.
Next items on our agenda are reports from our standing committees, economic planning development, Mr. Matney.
I think Mr. Duncan took care of it, Mayor.
Sir, public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, nothing to report, um, at a committee or from the departments. However, I would like to take this opportunity to, um, offer condolences to the family of Bob Cook, who's, um, our former council member that passed away last week. Um, he served on public safety and, and loved his firemen and police in the city of Malden tremendously. So please keep, um, the Cook family in your prayers. Thank you.
Ms. King. Public Works, Mr. Crayton.
Nothing today. Thank you.
Sir, on asset policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We held our first budget workshop. It was a good workshop. Mr. Duncan talked for 98% of it, um, but it was a really good workshop. Uh, we've got another one coming up on this Thursday, the following, which is the 27th, correct? Perfect. All right. So put that on your calendars, be ready for some discussions on, um, individual department budgets. And I did want to mention one thing you made a comment to earlier, Mr. Mayor, um, that items we were discussing were, had been in our packets since Thursday or Friday. Um, publicly, I want to thank Mr. Duncan. That's something that I think he's done an excellent job of getting our packets out to us by Thursday, Thursday afternoon, so that we have ample time before we come into these meetings to, to talk and give good, uh, educated discussion on it. So, Mr. Duncan, thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. He'd be the leeway on the educated part. Recreation, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think it was two Fridays ago, the senior center had an open house. It's attended by a lot of, of great folks to see all the different improvements that have happened at the senior center. So just a reminder to everybody that we've got a wonderful senior center. If you haven't checked it out lately, be sure to check it out soon because there's some really great programs and some really good renovations that we, we undertook over there. So that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Business and development service, Mr. Steenback.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two quick things. One, uh, reminder, the planning commission meets on the 25th of March. Um, so anyone interested, the agenda is online and, um, you can see what's being discussed there. Also, just a quick, um, not correction, but maybe also calling out Ms. Cindy Miller, who, you know, on the packets, I believe, has, has her hand in some of that work too. So, thank you. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
She usually sits in there with her fingers on the keyboard waiting on Mr. Duncan to say, "Go."
Just, just wanted to get her a little, little love too there.
Now we also have Mr. Saxon contributing to your workload, so way to go, Cindy. Thank you, Mr. Steenback. All right, uh, unfinished businesses ordinance on second reading, we have none. Uh, new business ordinance on first reading, we have done. Our standing committee items, we do have some of those. Our first one comes, uh, Ms. Miller, you want to introduce the first one?
Council has requested to approve a mutual aid agreement with Travelers Rest Police Department.
Thank you. Coming from public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll make the motion to approve the mutual aid agreement with Travelers Rest Police Department.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Steenback. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve a mutual aid agreement with the Travelers Rest Police Department, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Um, Ms. Miller?
The next item is a public works budget modification to purchase a dump truck.
Thank you. That's coming from finance, Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, after what Public Works is asking for is a reallocation of sewer rehabilitation fund. They had put money aside in last year's budget for a grant, did not receive that grant, um, and as such, we had money set aside already. Um, so that said, what we would like to do is take 200, we're requesting $200,000 for the purchase of a dual axle dump truck. One we have, we have two currently. One of them is 30 years old, so this would be a replacement of that item. Um, side note, this would be taking this capital expenditure, expenditure out of the budget that we're currently working on. It would be in there, um, otherwise. So I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve the budget reallocation of approximately, of $200,000, um, for the purchase of a dual axle dump truck.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Crayton. Any discussion? Crayton?
Quick question for Mr. Reynolds. Um, we, was this already, has this already been taken out of the budget we reviewed, or will it be, if, if this goes forward, the 200,000 moving in from next year to this year? It already been taken into account?
So next year's budget has not been taken, or I guess it has been taken into account for next year's budget?
We did not list it, uh, in next year's capital purchase.
See it, that's okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to reallocate, uh, the funds, uh, approximately $200, $200,000 for the purchase of a dual axle dump truck, say aye.
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 All those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Got one that sheet, we'd have been the fire department in charge of it, wouldn't we? All right, Ms. Miller.
The last standing committee item is a resolution to adopt the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, uh, funding plan for CDBG and home funds.
Thank you. I believe that'll be finance also. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We were all present at the aforementioned, um, redevelopment authority funding plan. 10 minutes ago, those of you who are awake, I'm asking you to, I'm asking to make a motion to adopt the proposed plan from the GCRAs.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the, uh, GCRAs plans, say aye.
Aye.
I think I saw Frank's lips move. Was, wasn't I? It wasn't I. Okay. All right. But, uh, those opposed, same, same sign. Hearing none, uh, motion carries unanimous. Got that one tongue tied. I believe that is all of our standing committee items. Uh, there is nothing from committee of the whole. We are now to our second, second public comment period. Uh, if anyone has any public comments, uh, or anything for the betterment, the good of this council and city of Malden, welcome to come to the podium. Hearing and seeing none, we will move on. Uh, call, I tell you, let me do this if I may, uh, because we're going to possibly go into, uh, executive session, but, uh, I could ask everyone just for a moment of silence, as Ms. King had already alluded to, that we lost, uh, not only a, a former councilman, but a friend, a church member of mine, uh, kids grew up together. So, uh, I passed away about a quarter to four last Wednesday morning after a pretty protracted illness. And, uh, I, I met with Fay yesterday and I, I passed along to her what Bobby told me on Sunday, uh, that his ailments wasn't getting him, but he was brokenhearted. He couldn't get home to Fay. So, uh, I'd ask if you'd, uh, allow me to, for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Uh, for those who'd like to attend, uh, receiving our friends will be tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at McAfee Simpsonville, and then, uh, the celebration of life service will be at Malden First Baptist, uh, at 2:00 on Wednesday. Uh, and we're having to do it in the, uh, Page Fellowship Hall because the sanctuary is being renovated right now. So be more than welcome to be there also. All right. Next item for us is a call for the executive session. Pleasure, council.
I think we're doing council concerns, aren't we, first, Mayor?
Uh, yes, that was, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I spoke with you about this, uh, the other day, but I would ask that when we adjourn today, we do so in the memory of Mr. Cook.
Cook. Thank you, sir. Made that note. Executive session.
Mayor, I move we enter executive session to consider discussions and negotiations incident proposed contractual arrangements regarding city center and Brideway Station under 30 dash 4 dash 78 two.
Got it. That's both of them together. I, I have a motion to the exec session for
economy of words.
For the two items of, uh, presented by Mr. Matney. So elegant, really? That's a big word for me. Did you notice that? Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Crayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated by Mr. Matney for executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, we will stand to move upstairs for executive session. Uh, those in the audience can wait for us to return. Those in the audience can wait for us to return.
All right, we are returning from executive session at approximately 8:47 PM. Someone like to report out?
Thank you, Mayor. Coming out of executive session, no decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Next item, possible action on items discussed in executive session. Seeing and hearing none, uh... Action on adjournment.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn, and we do so in the memory of Mr. Bob Cook.
Sir, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cradling. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned at 8:48. Thank you, everyone.
That'd be St. Patrick's Day.